This party, I mean.
Yeah.
All right, just for, just for fun. All right, it's 7:00 PM. I call to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista. It's 13th of December, 2022. Let's see, Mayor Pro Tem, and I will be hosting tonight's meeting. I would like to welcome all those joining us in public or in person, as well as those on our virtual webinar audience. A reminder that anyone who wishes to speak during public comment should sign up, should sign up on the assignment sheet over there on the counter as you enter the county center, or for those that are on the webinar that wish to speak, you should use the raised hand icon in the chat function to let us know. All right, so Paula, like to do a roll call, please?
Hey, Mayor Fay, Trustee Cobb, President, Trustee Hilkenga.
President.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Coxing.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
All right. Stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance?
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
See them? It's up first, the agenda adoption. Does anybody have any questions on the agenda tonight? I'm not hearing anything. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second. Swisher, Cobb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, up next, we have the consent agenda. That's a good stuff in there. Anybody have any thoughts, questions, comments? I did notice a few things in there. I'd just like to call out here. I know it's little past is August 18th for the Water Advisory Board, but I did see that that was Jerry Steinhour's last meeting. I just want to say thank you to him for his time and effort on the board. Don't know if he's watching this, but I did see that. And then also with the airport manager's report, I thought it was just really interesting. It was a really nice report with this search and rescue incident that just had happened on November 18th, 19th. Just super glad that A, we have the airport and B, that they were able to assist because that was a pretty intense mission, so. But, so, nobody has anything else to add or questions than would entertain a motion?
I like that motion.
Oh, second.
Rowe? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, New Zealand. Okay. Moving right along. So now we are at the public comment portion of the night. I would like to point out there are our computer hands raised online, so. Perfect, and you have some online? Okay, great. So we will start with the folks here in person. And if you don't mind, just come to the podium, share your first name, last name, and your address. And we have Brian, I, no.
Always a tough one.
Yes, I'm like, I'm not even going to attempt it.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, trustees and town staff. I'm Brian Mullier with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Chaffey County. And I'm here tonight with what I think is some really potentially exciting news. Dustin Nichols and I will be back next month to talk about our fuller partnership, and the lease piece that we're working on with Casey Martin and city staff. I'm so very excited to come back in January, but tonight I wanted to share with you just briefly and quickly an opportunity that I've been made aware of. It's through the Colorado Opioid Abatement Council. And these opportunities are rare. It's a infrastructure share grant opportunity. You may be aware of it, but most likely you're not aware of it. The partnership needs to be for us to apply for funds for our Buena Vista building with you folks, has to be partnered with a municipality. I'm just going to read to you quickly the purpose of the infrastructure share. According to the Colorado MOU, "Purpose of the infrastructure shares to promote capital improvements and provide operational assistance for developing or improving the infrastructure necessary to abate the opioid crisis within the state of Colorado. The infrastructure share is intended to supplement opioid settlement funds requested by any party or region." So we are very interested, obviously, in applying for this rare brick and mortar opportunity. There's a potential in 2023 for the first year and a second year for $500,000 per year. As I said, these opportunities are very, very rare for these kind of dollars. And emphasis will be given to a number of opportunities. It will be a competitive grant process, obviously, but again, they will focus on, especially in the first year, brick and mortar endeavors, which obviously ours is. And we're looking forward to applying. Wanted to make you very aware, as soon as possible, the grant needs to be completed by January. My staff, my development director, my grant writer, and I will take care of everything. If the town deems this opportunity worthy, which I hope you will, there will be some minor reporting requirements on your end. My understanding from reading through the grant is essentially just saying that you provide the money for this joint project with the Boys and Girls Club. So look forward to sharing this, more information about this opportunity. Fingers crossed, we will be applying with your, with your consent, if you agree to it, for $500,000 each year. A million dollars would go a long way toward this building next door. So thanks for considering.
Can I ask a question? Yes. So can you state again exactly what the, what you're asking for, for the town? Just our?
Sure. So, yeah, a partnership. And so you serve, and I, I'm not sure if it's going to be, you know, essentially, but essentially you'll be the fiscal agent for the past five funds, is my understanding. Do you know a little more of that?
A little bit.
Okay.
We essentially would be the applicant on the grant and within written as a partnership. But we would be the fiscal agent. We would be responsible for meeting the grant obligations. So I had a little heads up on this through Joseph before he left. And we don't have anything else going towards this grant program right now that I'm aware of. But it is a consideration of staff time managing the grants, submitting the reimbursements, those types of things. But my understanding is the, the offer from Boys and Girls is that they would handle all of those things in terms of writing the grants, you know, helping with the pay, reimbursements, all those types of things that come later. So does that?
Yeah, it does. Thank you both.
Sure. No, thank you, Philip, and thanks for Joseph, and good to see everyone. And fingers crossed if we decide it's a worthy endeavor, we, we're already working on it, hoping that we will say yes. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Right. It's the only one on the list here.
Okay, so we have Paul Andrews, we have CCCF, and we also have to raise our hands. So which ones did you want to start with?
I'll start with Amy. She was the first to raise her hand.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
He, I'm actually here for the public hearing. I just, the chat's disabled, so I couldn't say that.
Oh.
Okay, great. We'll call on you later. Thanks.
Hello?
So we're next. And then who's next on the list?
Michael? Did you catch?
Yeah, sorry, I said that muted. We have CCCF, Charlie, Charlie, Charlie Foxtrot.
Hi, this is Betsy Dittenberg of the Chaffey County Community Foundation. I don't know how to change my screen name, so I couldn't change it to my first name. Sorry about that.
Don't worry. Can you provide your, your address as well, please?
Sure. It's 309 Pinion Hills Drive, Howard, Colorado.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to share a few words of thank you to the trustees. We are hopeful that with the approval of the budget today that you'll be also approving, working with the Chaffey County Community Foundation to, again, do the community grants program. And I just wanted to thank Mayor Pro Tem, the town trustees, and the staff for your partnership in this, and also that I'm looking forward to working with Trustee Cobb on the Grant Review Committee going forward. Our understanding is that with the budget approval, we'll be looking at having around $57,871 available for competitive grants this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next, we have Paul Andrews.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is Paul Andrews. I'm the managing partner of the, the Crossing Development Project that I presented to you a couple of months ago, back in October. My address is 27999 County Road 301 in BV. I wanted to talk to you this evening about a grant application under the Department of Local Authority and Housing that's available for us to make a lot more of the homes in the Crossing permanently dedicated to and affordable to local residents. Since the sketch plan meeting two weeks ago, we've been working with Reed at the Housing Trust and Becky at the Housing Authority to dedicate more of the homes in the first phase of the project to local residents. Our current proposal at the moment is to have 36 apartments in Phase 1, which is 12 more than we originally presented, that would be built in partnership with the Housing Authority and the housing, and they would be made available to tenants who are currently on the waiting list at the Housing Authority. And Becky and her team would manage the leasing of the project to make sure that it's available to local residents. Our current analysis is at sort of 65% to 95% AMI level. In addition, we've been working with Reed at the Housing Trust to make available up to 32 of the units in the first phase available to the Housing Trust and their clients. So we're talking about 120 housing units in the first phase of the project. Up to 36 of those would be rented to Housing Authority clients, and up to 32 would be available to the Housing Trust, which buys the land and then sells the improvements to first-time buyers, time buyers, and other local residents. Those would be at between 70% and 90% of current AMI levels. In order to make this economically feasible, we have been talking with the Department of Housing about a grant program that they've just rolled out in the last month. And the recommendation from Reed, Becky, Joseph, and myself is to apply for a $5 to $6 million grant under this program. There are about $140 million in total available, for which over at least 50% is set aside for mountain resort communities. That grant would pay for the infrastructure improvements in Phase 1 of the project. That's the water main, other wet infrastructure, and then the paving of the streets and sidewalks. To the extent we were able to successfully obtain the full $5 million of grant proceeds, that would enable us to make all 32 of those units available to the Housing Trust and work through some very affordable rents with Becky and the Housing Authority. So it's something that the four of us are very excited about, similar to the previous two presenters. The application, the applicant under, under the grant has to be a government organization. And the people we're talking to at DOLA and the Department of Housing are both recommending that the town would be the most appropriate applicant because ultimately those public infrastructure improvements will be owned by the town once complete. So.
You got 30 seconds left, Paul.
Done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lisa, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, so, you know, with this, we've heard people approach you about supporting some grants. There's largely two different scenarios here. Two separate grants. You know, with the first person that spoke on behalf of Boys and Girls Club, you know, obviously, that's on some land that the city is giving towards that project. And also going to be using, the Recreation Department will be utilizing that facility. And this other grant that Paul is talking about is through DOLA. And my understanding is that we are also in a grant application for Carbonette Street project. This were just some things to think about. I don't believe there's a conflict in talking with Jeff about this a little bit, per se. However, there should probably be some consideration to, you know, if we were to support this for this developer, how many more would we need to be supporting? And I know that with these grants, there are things that you have to speak to from the municipal side. If we're supporting, it will be, it'll be on us to make sure that it's submitted on time. There's also with many grants, there's also follow-on reports and requirements that you have to fulfill. So those are just a couple of things to consider. And perhaps you'd want to just kind of bat some ideas around during trustee interaction at the end. But that's kind of too sensitive. I don't know if Bill gave anything to add to that.
I know, I think you covered it well. I guess maybe a question back to Paul would be the timing of, of the application for him? And to see, does that correspond to Carbonette Street at the same time? Or can they be staggered a little bit so that they can be spread out? I think it is a consideration. It's an amazing opportunity, and I think it is something we, the town should take seriously. But it is additional workload. And is there, are we prepared for other applications as well? Support this?
Paul, are you still listening? Still there?
I have to hit that unmute button every time, huh? I'm getting it. Sorry, I'm not there this evening. I'm stuck in Denver. No, our preferred timing, the grant process was opened up about three weeks ago. And in order to apply, you can apply on a monthly basis. And you are supposed to submit a letter of intent by the 10th of that month. We just found out that statewide, there were about $300 million of applications put in by December 10th for their full applications to go in at the end of the year. So it's obviously going to be a competitive process. We have our letter of intent substantially drafted, and our preference would be to submit that letter of intent by January 10th and to submit the full grant application by the end of January. Based on my conversations with Joseph, that would be in parallel with the application for Carbonette Street. I don't think that these two projects are in competition. From the feedback we've received from Department of Housing, each of the applications will stand on their own merits. And our preference would be to submit it in January because with a competitive grant process, the sooner we get in the queue, probably the better our chances are of becoming fully or partially funded. And again, it's, it provides us the ability, if successful, to permanently dedicate 32 two- and three-bedroom houses to the Housing Trust that would be available to local residents at up to 95% of AMI levels on a, on a permanent basis. So it's a pretty unique opportunity.
Thank you very much for, for bringing that up, Paul. And I guess for all the, I know they have already left, but if it's all right with the trustees and staff, I think we'll push that to the end of the night, trustee-staff interaction to kind of go through that more and potentially take more consideration. I do understand the importance, the timing, as it seems like it's that way for, for many people and entities right now. But we should probably take some time to think about that a little bit. But that's very helpful and appreciate your information and, you know, everything you're doing. So thank you, Paul.
Thanks for considering it. I'll be there in person next time. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on for public comment? Do you see anything else, Michael?
No, that, that was it.
Okay. Okay. So the next up will be staff reports. And Lisa, we'll start with you.
Okay. So I am just finishing up performance reviews for the department heads. And gosh, we have so many phenomenal, fantastic leads of departments. It's, it's really amazing. So I'm really enjoying, actually, because it is an evaluation and give them things that they can shoot for. And then also, we could talk a little bit about their goals. So it's been going really well. The other thing is that you'll notice I put some pictures in there on conference of plan. And we had our first kickoff to that and also the water policy meeting. We helped cover that when Joseph wasn't feeling well. And I thought that that went very well. We got lots of good feedback on that. And so, yeah. And then I just encourage you to, if you haven't already, set up a meeting with me to get ahold of me. And would love to, even if we need to do it on Zoom or whatever we need to do, more than happy to try and accommodate you with those meetings. But I think I'm a little over half done, so. And I've really enjoyed getting to that, that I have talked to, so. Good.
Any else have questions? Anything they want to share with Lisa? Thank you. And I, I agree. I think the conference of that first planning meeting went really well. It was nice to get together, so looking forward to more of those. Next up on the agenda here is Judge Green. All right. Welcome. Nice to see you.
Brian Green. I prepared some brief comments, and then after that, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. I began serving Buena Vista as municipal judge in the spring of 2020, so a couple of years going on. And quite a few interesting cases that I could share. What I want to back up and talk about myself. I've been the Park County judge for 16 years. Just got retained for another four, so I'm going to be around. I've been the Alma Municipal Court Judge and Fair Play Minister Support Judge for about 10 years, and then picked up BV a couple of years ago, as I mentioned. I do live in Fair Play. My wife's an elementary creative arts teacher, so we're pretty rooted in that community. I know it's not in BV, but I would consider it kind of a neighbor town. And I do love this community in BV. We love the hot springs. We love your restaurants, shopping, the trails. So it's not that I'm a stranger to the town. And here I am. So I've got a bunch of comments here that I read back, and it's just a bunch of bragging. I'm going to skip that about how much I know and how professional I can be. But really, what we've been focusing on, we've converted all of our open warrants to signature bonds so that we're complying with current laws. We're not failing to advise someone immediately. We're going through now to identify past cases that are due for automatic sealing. So we're complying with a new law that's coming out on that. Got a good working relationship with Judy. You can ask her. I think she'll confirm that. I've known Chief Morgan since 2004. He was actually an officer in Park County for a while when I was up there. So I've got a good relationship with him. The officers that support the court have been great. I'm so happy to have security here. It's not that it's a scary docket, but it does, it's nice to have a police presence when people are showing up. I'm available all month long for emails, to do warrants, motions, et cetera. So it's not as if I only work for the town one particular day. I do stay in touch and am available all the time. I know I've had at least one complaint lodged against me, so I can talk about that. Sometimes people will test a court or a judge to see if they have the willpower to resist the pressure. I had a gentleman who was set for trial. We continued it. He knew about it, pretended he didn't, pretended he made a trip up here just for that, demanded it be dismissed, and I didn't do that. And then he took a plea deal and pled it out. But he did lodge a complaint with the town. So I guess you can look at that in a couple of ways. I look at it as if I've got the ability to be firm when necessary. But otherwise, I have a congenial nature. And it's, I'm not too formal. It's not a stiff-feeling court system. We tried once where we would do all rise and I would come out of the bathrooms, but that's so this is, it's, it's a little challenging to make it feel like a legal proceeding. But we do go through legal rights, formally talk about their options. Real proceeding, people get this, this is not a joke. We've had a lot of interesting trials. We've actually had three jury calls this year. The first one, the defendant didn't show up. He had a legitimate excuse. He had gone to the hospital, had a prospite, a toe removed. He offered to show it to me the next time he was here. The next time we tried the case, he did appear. We went through the trial, and the jury found him guilty of a minor offense. Set another case for trial, and at that point, he realized that the town's not going to back down. He just went ahead and pled guilty instead of going through with the jury trial. So we went ahead and released those jurors. But that's a lot of work to call in a jury panel, go through jury selection. I do have a lot of experience dealing with difficult defendants, people with mental issues, people with hostility issues. I've been doing a lot of competency evaluations for folks. I know there are some interesting characters in this community. There are interesting characters in Fair Play and South Park. So I've dealt with a lot of stressful situations, people threatening to kill me. So I'd rather not put my address on the record because I'm trying to hide that right now from a particular gentleman. So it doesn't, it doesn't, not much shocks me anymore. I've, I've done this a while. I'm not trying to brag, but I am comfortable with the job I do. I know people's rights. I'm not simply a rubber stamp for the police department. We did hold one trial, and I did find the defendant not guilty. The majority of trials, the, the town has sufficient evidence to meet their verdict proof, but it's not as if I'm automatically going to rule in favor of the town at all times. The types of cases we do deal with, a lot of traffic matters. We get a lot of animal matters, dogs barking, dogs running loose, dogs biting people in various places. A lot of those barking dogs and dogs at large involve neighbors that are not getting along. So I try my best to de-escalate so that these people can somehow live together in peace and harmony. It's challenging and not always effective, but at least there's an effort there to try and get these people to see their neighbor's perspective. We do a lot of code enforcement, addressing people who don't have building permits, camping where prohibited, abandoned vehicles, refuse on the property. So there's that type of enforcement. A surprising number of juvenile cases coming out of the school, bullying, theft, careless driving type stuff. And with our town prosecutor, Ms. Ganga, she's really good at using diversion methods to try and get the kids back on track, use it as a teaching experience rather than punishment. So there's a lot of counseling or classes that they can do or other types of community service to try and get the charges. So there's a lot of counseling or classes that they can do or other types of community service to try and get the charges dropped. Okay, that was quick. Thank you for letting me serve as your judge. I do appreciate the opportunity to be a member of the community and to help handle your cases. If you do have any questions, I'm more than happy to provide the best answer I can for you.
Questions? No questions, but thank you very much for going over. It's nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet all of you. I was trying to remember if anyone was on the board when I did my application and interview. I don't think so.
Cindy Swisher, definitely.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't remember, ma'am.
But yeah, I think we've got we've had a new board since that.
Yeah. So thank you for the work you're doing for the town as well. I hope that's not too grovely, but thank you. If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and sit down.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Be nice to come back anytime and let us know what's going on.
Okay. And anytime that you want to drop in on court, it's not that exciting, but it's.
Dynamics and how he interacts with with the people. I mean, I wrote that into my staff.
Careful when you go into the bathroom. Does it once a month?
Yeah, it is. It is once a month.
Yeah, it's normally the fourth Wednesday, November, December, we change it because of the holidays.
Next, we've got Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. My reports are, I believe, in the packet. A little different today. I was missing some some data for the traditional amazing water graph reports that I provide for the, you know, this year and the two previous years. I will say that we're still kind of trending that same way. January, I'll put together a year in review and we'll combine all the months and we'll look at look at a larger, larger sum of what we produce and what we built for and what our account was, along with a few other things that, you know, kind of identify maybe a total, total run on service line installations for 2022, total run on meter installations for 2022 and kind of look at that trend and see how we landed this year. Things are, it's strange. When I look at that water report, the one I was able to look at the get the metered consumption and it's, you know, the last three years, which is fantastic. It's dropped, you know, so I think in 2020, we we did like eight billion in November and and 2021, we did like six point eight and like this year we did like six point one, six point two. So that's a, that's a good thing to see. People are just, you know, getting smarter. So anyway, so it's fantastic to see. Some some cool pictures of that giant piece of equipment that we brought out there to to take those trenches in the gallery. It was, it was, it was exhilarating and terrifying all at the same time. But it was an amazing thing to see. So we were, we were fairly successful in accomplishing our goals. We wound up with a little less high runs, but we, I think we achieved the desired results. So kind of preliminary, you know, napkin math, looks like we're going to be able to get what we achieve. Or we'll be doing a well off test in February to determine that. Looks like the water quality is really good, too. We haven't done any analysis and lab work on that yet. But it has QC sampling, the water's clean and clear. And so, yeah, so it was amazing thing to see. I, you know, at this time, I just, I just really want to recognize Joe. First of all, first of all, I mean, he stuck it out there. He was, he worked some long days. This guy's worked some long hours. We were, we were never comfortable enough not to have a representative on site and continue to see if anything could happen. Hydroelectricity, things like that. So looking at the worst possibilities that could happen up there. But also big thanks to Courtney Hemingway for giving this project going and for the D-Win team for sticking it out. They they broke that that thing on multiple occasions and they they dropped in additional motors for horsepower. Amazing crew. I mean, they could fix everything. The the inner drive chain, not that asset chain that we see, but there's an inner drive chain. And it's a retrofitter from a D nine dozer. And it's just, it's just amazing that, you know, these guys have been able to to do what they do. Anyways, pretty, pretty fantastic. So a little bit more on the water plant expansion project. We'll be coming to you in January with one final agreement for final design for JBA. So we're we're really close. We did get a base kind of GMP price model from Stanic. And unfortunately it went up, but we're kind of looking at ways that we could kind of be, you know, save some money. So we're looking at the heating system, heating and HVAC system, heating and air conditioning units for possibly some savings, possibly looking at some of the plumbing components. But it's strange. It's a strange kind of world we're living in. We're, we're seeing some inflation quarterly for equipment and materials. And it's, you know, it's not twenty percent, but it's close to that. So prices are coming up every quarter. So trying to nail this thing down and keeping, you know, a number that we came, you know, that we came to to maybe understand this time last year, it's not the same number anymore. It's not the same number it was when we applied for the loan. But but we're standing. It's fantastic. We're going to try to lock in the prices. So we're going to get get with those guys tomorrow and start getting some of the equipment costs and materials kind of locked in with the vendors and the material suppliers. Presented to Dola last week, I think it was last week. It's all kind of a blur. What a, what a cool opportunity. Listen, I went to Pueblo and she was fantastic and they were fantastic. So I think that we did a pretty good job presenting our project. So keep your fingers crossed. I think we'll know in December to see how that goes. Anyway, so really cool experience for me. Source Water Protection, I I talked a little bit with one of the engineers from the El Brat team today. They're really doing their due diligence on this. So they're, they're, we provided some feedback and and a draft application for road construction and they've taken it in thoughtful consideration. They're also working with the county on a few things too right now, but we haven't had a formal application come in just yet. But we'll probably be meeting with their team to see, to see how that goes. I think the county is looking at some of their design work and they want to be able to implement maybe some of our requests or recommendations for maybe stormwater detention, things like that. Things like that. So that's about all that's going on right there. We did receive one more application and I guess in the future, I think I was thinking about this, maybe any application that might come in through public works and I just identified with the board so you can see what kind of activities happening outside of a town, of our town and the water supply protection district. I think this year, there's probably maybe three or four applications, maybe two. Wasn't that many. Year before, it was quite a few. Big, big thanks to the Parks team for getting the town holiday festive. Thanks to to you. So, yeah, getting the lights up. Sangre de Cristo does this stuff on a high, on the highway with their equipment and their team. So big thanks to those guys as well. Let's see. Had a pretty busy, busy night. I guess the only thing I'd say, want to maybe talk about and and thank the Water Advisor Board for for running with some of their agenda items. If we did apply for a water, water plan grant application for water conservation plan. So Kelly Collins and the team kind of ran with that, submitted it through the town's account to that's probably something that will, better idea, I'll let go this probably early May, April, just like the CW TV grant. I guess since I brought that up, I should probably talk about that just a little bit. We're still waiting for the 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 grant documents documentation. So I think a little bit like what we're just kind of seeing in our community, they're kind of feeling that's good. I do believe they're, they're somewhat understaffed and they're aware of our situation. And so some of the feedback, conversations that that we've had with their team is, is, you know, that we're starting to incur, incur costs for our projects. So, so and they're aware of that. So through a conversation today and an email, I think what we'll probably hopefully get to see is maybe that grant come our way. But in the meantime, I think we'll start to see some payout requests. And hopefully there's an opportunity for us to capture all the costs involved. As we did a one point one million dollar grant match. So it's a pretty expensive project. D-Win's portion, it's quite, it's quite expensive. Keep you posted on that the next quarter, see how that goes. Thanks, I. Happy holidays.
Any comments, thoughts?
Gina, Trustee Jenkins has a question for Sean.
All right, go for it, Mark.
Yeah, Sean, curious. I remember there was a question about the wetlands on the expansion of the gallery. Was was that ever followed through with or any thoughts?
Yeah, yeah. We we met on site with our decor and did a field evaluation and it was determined that it was not a wetland.
Cool. Great. Thank you.
Who else? This is something that I'm just curious that on this back to the big machine, are they on top of the Gorill Meadow with that big machine?
So they're, they're down below the Gorill Meadow and the 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 two quarter sections were horizontal well pre-identified. So just below that, but yeah, yeah. They they're just, yeah, in that same general area. Yep.
I just wondered because like you're not supposed to park on a leach field or whatever. So was there any danger of that heavy piece of equipment sinking?
I told you, I'm curious.
Right? So so we we kind of did a test run on a Sunday and we watched them start it up and we watched them drive it to you know, the point A, you know, and they crossed one of our lines. So Joe, Joe and I are out there outside and we're on the phone with one of our water operators, Rick Secco. And he's, he's at home. He's got his skate of view, you know, team viewer on. We're looking at it. We're like, watch the humidity, watch the humidity, you know, see what happened. You know, it's it's amazing. We we never had one issue with that. And and, you know, the the ground is really stable. I mean, it's it's not a wetland. So you, you know, so it's not organics. It's it's glacial tillage from the top all the way to the bottom and you're sitting on that. And in in most of the areas, the the water table is down about eight feet. And so you have pretty firm soils on the top. They what, one of the things I can, I'll quit talking about, one of the things I was always kind of worried about is like institutional knowledge, like just hoping that our hospitals are right. You know, we we've been out there. We surveyed everything. We shot everything. We had everything, you know, shot, surveyed, put on drawings, you know, and marked. Looking at, you know, where our infrastructure was put in, maybe the mid seventies, eighties and the nineties. Hoping that, you know, there wasn't something that got put in that somebody forgot was there. It's kind of the things. It's amazing. Yeah, we were running, you know, thirty feet away from an active infiltration line.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Okay, and then last for the staff reports, Fire Chief Bertrault. He will not be here tonight with the Seattle Board meeting. We have him back the next one, just put him into a flex spot. His report's in here anyhow, so we've all had a chance to read that. And if anybody does have questions, we can always follow up with him.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, with that said, it's time to move on to the business items. And let's see, first we have item A, canceled a public hearing concerning water allocation and water dedication.
So I'll elaborate on this because as you know, Joseph is way on vacation, traveling out, I think, actually. And so he's been working, he's been working very diligently on the water policy. And you kind of seen members of that through work sessions and whatnot. We had a meeting with developers. They've had opportunity to go on survey. The survey's not quite closed yet. We're wanting a little bit more response. And he put this in his report. I I will say that I feel like the report was meant more for we were ready for this item and it was public notice. And so as such, we got to a point when we went and talked with developers and started to get feedback that Joseph felt we really needed to just take some time and kind of continue to vet this. And then I know he also met with Planning Commission and they've given him several things to go back and look for as far as benchmarking with other communities and some more data. So they didn't feel like it's ready to the point either. So we're just, we've canceled the item on the agenda because it had already been public notice. So we want to remain transparent to the public, to let them know where we're at with this. But I expect that there'll be several revisions. And I know that there's a word recommendation is in his report that's attached. But please understand that like the report was made, this was probably put in the packet before, you know, we had really vetted through and decided we need to hold back. So those recommendations are maybe thoughts at this point in time, but not really items that are being truly recommended. So but it does provide good status kind of where we're at. And like he said in the report, we need to do some, some more meetings and vet this through. Plus, the survey hasn't closed. So we're just not at a point where we're ready to talk through this with you.
Well, sorry. Oh, no, it's fun. I figure just because there is information on here and I'll ask our attorney, Jeff, if if it is appropriate, not looking to do motions or decisions of any sort, but if we are able to do a little bit of discussion, if trustees have or questions, if that is appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, the agenda says that it's canceled, but you can have, you know, a short discussion about it. You're not going to be able to make any decisions or anything. But if you want to address briefly, that's fine, but I wouldn't go into too many details because it does say it was canceled.
With that, I actually just have a couple of things on on maybe process, excuse me. But I noticed from Joseph's demo that we have, I mean, first of all, I'm grateful for the update, the status report. I thank you for that. But I was wondering if, given that, you know, the magnitude of this issue, we could do in the way that we did for the cop plan, we being staff, send an email to all the mybb.com subscribers so that we do get more input from folks that aren't part of the development and building community. And I know some people think that that community is really the most affected, but it does seem like everyone should have a chance to weigh in. And and what's on mybb.com gives them a chance to become pretty educated or at least know where to go for questions if they do have them. And then I'd love to see if we get a little more response.
I can bring that up to Doug.
Okay.
And see if we can do some magic with sending out an email.
Sure. Similar to what was for the cop plan or you probably have, just in looking at what we have on the water planning feature or subject area, you've probably got pretty good language there already to invite people to participate.
Right.
But in that, in that case, also, I would love to see if we could extend the survey, given that we're not going to be revisiting this, it sounds like for a while, for another fifteen days or something, just because it is the holiday season.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why that would be a problem. And I'll talk to Doug. And I know also that Joseph, even though he's taking some vacation, I think he was planning on being available if needed. So we'll figure that out, see if we can extend that.
Thank you. I have actually one random, well, it's not random at all, actually. But the reason why I want to bring it up, because I think it's something that should be defined as you go through the processes. In reading this, it's not necessarily really pertaining to this exact document, but the word stakeholders is used multiple times. It's actually used differently throughout. At one point, it's stakeholders, the community. Other times it's used with developers. And I would ask that that is clearly defined. And I would ask that that is clearly defined as who, like, who are your stakeholders? Are we talking developers or these general community members that are, you know, citizen A V that live now and, you know, are in what circle? Like, just, uh, just to better understand who that is in the context of whose meeting. And I only say that now because I know, you know, I want to have that idea for when we go through all the stuff who we're actually talking about. I have some other thoughts, but I'll be for trustee staff interaction. So anybody else have any thoughts that they'd like to bring up now?
I do, but I don't, should we wait till staff interaction on that or?
You know, let's. Yeah, do you have a recommendation, Jeff? Putting him to work tonight. I think he's, oh, you're muted, Jeff.
Yeah, I know. I was having a trouble with my cursor finding the new button quickly. You know, I think it's really up to, it's up to you how you want to handle it. It's, either way, it's fine.
I prefer to honestly do it now, just so we're done and that we can move through it. So, um, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, I think just piggybacking off the, your comment about stakeholders. I think one of my concerns while reading this, and again, I know that this was prepared and with a different set of mind and how we're reading it and, and everything. But what kind of reads through to me is that this process could last quite a while, just given the amount of stakeholders that are involved. And that, you know, some things we may want to address sooner than others. For example, the allocation of water, like how we divvy it up or the different buckets we put it in. You know, I thought that was going to be more contentious, but reading through the memo, it sounds like that's not that contentious. So like, if that's something that we want to move forward with at a quicker rate than some of the others that are more contentious. That way, I give developers are looking at phase one for a project, they at least kind of know, these are the, this is the, the town is looking to fill these buckets in certain percentages or whatever, but at least we set that up while we deal with the more contentious areas instead of waiting on everything. Because I feel like, you know, we had the first conversations of it about water and if we wanted to change how things move, like what, three months ago roughly? And they're like, all right, well, it might take some time. We'll get to you in a couple of weeks. And it's, well, we gotta, I could just see this getting pushed and pushed and pushed. And if we at least cover ourselves in terms of the percentage, like want to increase percentage of a, of, you know, our safety or backup water, however we're raising it. And also, you know, if it's AMI commercial, if that's something we want to go with faster than others. But instead of waiting for everything all at once, because it seems like with all the different stakeholders involved, it could take a while. It was my main thought while reading through that.
Super. That's good. Number one and number two recommendations that are in this, you know, I did brief. You know, I mean, I guess you can set a policy that's one of your roles, no matter what, despite, and the water policy is exactly that. It's a water policy. So, you know, his thoughts and what he puts in here is that the additional time would really be reflective and of the ordinance. But I do think he was shooting for February with policy as well in order to give some, give this draft back to the develop, to the developers that we spoke to at the first meeting. We had overwhelming turnout, only four R S B P'd and we had twenty people that showed up, different developers that showed up to this meeting. And it was pretty overwhelming, the amount of ideas and creativity that they came to the plate with. And so I think that, and then Joseph, obviously he wasn't, he was sick that night, that day, because he'd gotten sick the night before. So I know that he's planning on taking that, that data and looking at it and every info we got, putting it in to a new revision draft policy. The things that the planning commission gave him to do with that when he took his stem. Cities, see what others are doing and then coming up with data points. Maybe a little challenging and take a little more time, but we'll certainly, I don't see why we could just shoot to maybe January into January somewhere in there. I know he put February, but I'll take that back to talk about it. I just know that with the holidays, that is probably where the holidays are over. So just because there's too many people gone and too many things that are pulling other people away. So it's not kind of give you a background. I, I feel like definitely defining the stakeholders, it is, it is a very unique topic. And obviously think developers are going to be, they're going to be the ones that are going to be the most responsive. But there are emergency, you know, pots that we're putting together and other things that affect the public. So I understand that too. Yeah, I don't know, just to give you a background.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I just think it, you know, between now and February, there's a good chance we're going to have to already vote on, I think, folders. And there's other developers who are really fast moving.
Yes.
So the more that I think we can get some clarity on, at least our priorities as they are right now.
Yeah.
The better.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. And in my understanding is that, you know, the ordinance was sort of added value and gave us a little more, I guess, teeth, you could say, so to speak, as far as deadlines and holding people to, you know, three years was really to prevent development from taking a long time to develop and holding on to the tabs. But the policy can still be moving forward, even though the ordinance may not, may not drive at the same time. So it may not, we may not need it at all. We could just say you have the right to, you have that capability to set policy. And so therefore we're going to set the policy and when it runs out, it runs out. I think we, you know, communicated that with the, the developers. And so I, I hope they understand and it seems like they're getting that word. So really, that's a good thing, not a bad thing.
But if any other thoughts, Mark, I don't want to forget about you on Zoom.
Yeah, no, I, I'm glad Peter brought that up. I, I agree with Peter on, you know, as far as focusing on that pie. I know we've been worried about having something like Lisa said, having some teeth. And I agree with moving that part of it forward. Definitely. I think that's a great idea from Peter.
And since, well, you said, kind of want to do a little discussion just because the information was on, was within the packet, though it was canceled. Anybody could read the packet and see that. So it still is public in that sense. So thank you for the discussion. Anybody like to continue, always continue trust staff later, but the essence of time, of course.
A lot of it is very encouraging too, that is, like developers wanting to get together, see if they can, like in a purchasing power. Like there's a lot of it is very encouraging.
Yeah, no, it's a great update. I appreciate that. Good stuff to see. All right. So let's move on to the next business item. And this actually is a public hearing for the 2023 budget. I know, Philip, you're, you're pretty much on for the rest of the night.
Yeah.
Go get him, Philip.
Here we go. You all ready?
Yeah, we haven't introduced this.
So, yeah, you'll hear from me a bit tonight. Try to do my best to be informative, but not too long winded. So on page eighty-nine of the packet is the first item related to the budget tonight, as you mentioned. It is the public hearing. It is the conclusion of our public hearings tied to the budget process. So I'll go through, I'll hit a few highlights and then I'll take questions from the board. And then you can move on to public comment after that.
Sorry to interrupt you, but just to be clear, we are opening the public hearing now, right?
Do we open it beforehand?
You open it now.
Okay.
So just because any, any information that's delivered to you that you're deciding, making decision based on to declare the public hearing, so we're starting it now. Just want to make sure we, usually you declare the public hearing open and then when you're done, you'll close it after you voted. So.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
All right. So a few highlights on where we're at with the budget. So since last meeting, we've, we've kind of buttoned up all of the funds. We, you know, took a, we did get our October sales tax for the town portion. So that was incorporated in, it really didn't change the projections all that much, but we were able to get that in. I also moved a couple of items that we had been tracking as capital projects. One being the comprehensive plan and the other one being the implementation of Lexapro for police department standard operating procedures. Those are now moved into the operating budgets because they're not really capital items. So no change to the budget, but just changing where those are located in the budget. And then kind of tightening up and finalizing the, the inter-fund transfers. So where we're at, all of our, all of our budgets are structured about that. So ongoing expenses are covered by ongoing revenues. However, the town is spending quite a bit into fund balance. So I want to make sure that that is understood and the reason why. So about the middle of that page, you'll see kind of a summary by fund of what fund balance is being spent and how. So if you're okay, I'll, I'll kind of highlight those. So from the general fund, we have a little over three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars coming from our ARPA reserve going to the water fund for the water treatment plant project. So the general fund will show that we are spending a negative or we have a deficit that is spinning into the fund balance because we're transferring that out of the general fund. For the capital improvement fund, we are transferring a lot of money from our general fund into the capital improvement fund in 2022 for things like our savings for the police station remodel that came from the fire station proceeds, things like that. And so we still have quite a bit to spend on the police station project. So you'll see there, we have about two point eight, a little over two point eight billion dollars that we will spend into fund balance next year. But again, that's primarily for police station remodel and then the carryovers we have for Arizona street bridge, our trail and bridge, Cordova Park, which we've been holding a savings from year to year on that. McPhelamy stage, finishing that up and a few other small carryover projects for rec drills and open space. For the water fund, we were showing about a two point one million dollars being spent in due fund balance. And that's primarily the infiltration gallery expansion project. And then the purchase of the water rights that we have on the books now, but we, there's potential, but we know some of it will carry over in the next year. So wrapping that up, conservation trust fund will be transferring an additional twenty seven thousand dollars over into the cap home improvement fund. So that will show spending in the fund balance for that fund as well. Okay, so it's, it's quite a bit of fund balance spending, but it's already things that are on the books carrying over in the next year. Okay. And I'll show you when we get into the adoption process, what that looks like so that you all understand what, what we're approving or what you're approving tonight. On the next page, page ninety is the projected ending fund balances for the year 2023. This again is to demonstrate spending in the fund balance, but where this leaves us for each fund. And I would say overall, we're very healthy across all of the funds. Where, where I like to see us, especially when it comes to the general fund and the water and the water fund. Also, the street fund is, is very healthy as well. So my, my read on the projected fund balances is that we, we're doing a very good job, but we are spending a lot of money right now on big projects. So. So that's good. Oh, one other thing, sorry, on this, on this sheet, it's hard to see on the screen, I apologize. But under general fund, you will see kind of the puts and takes and then what we hold off and reserve for taper, what we hold off reserve for emergency, twenty seven percent. You'll see the ARPA reserve fund balance there, or not fund balance, but ARPA reserve balance is just over four hundred thousand. We're going to hold that because if you remember, the town committed to holding about four hundred thousand towards the carbon and street entitlements for the affordable housing project. So if any of those funds are needed for that project, whether it's for entitlements or the board chooses to use it for those purposes, those funds are held in the general fund set aside. They're not going towards anything else until the board directs us to do so. So that's kind of it on fund balances. The capital projects are on the following pages. Again, the only change related to that is moving a couple of projects that are highlighted in yellow out of the capital, capital list and into operating. So nothing big there. And then the detail of the broad, of the budget follows, I won't get into all of that. But if, at least if you will scroll to the first page, page ninety-three of the budget detail, it's just below that. Okay. Just as an example, so you can kind of see how it shows up in the budget detail. This is looking at the general fund and the very top row, you will see a red number, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. This is showing that we're spending into fund balance by roughly three hundred thousand. And again, that's primarily that transfer of ARPA funds to the water fund that I mentioned earlier. So when you look at the detail, that high level number, you'll see whether we have a surplus projected or a deficit. And the deficit means we're spending in the fund balance. I think that's it. I, I appreciate, I do want to say in terms of the process, I really appreciate all of the department heads and, and the participation from them, from our advisory boards and the public. We did get quite a bit of input and help and direction from our partners and our volunteers, the advisory boards. Lisa, for trusting me to run, run with, run with budget this year. It is a very robust process. I, I have to say that, that the numbers, the thought behind each one of these accounts is, is thorough as I've seen it in my time with town. The, your department heads understand their budgets very well. And, and so it's, it's very reassuring when it comes to, all right, let's go. I know people are watching it and are aware of what, how they're spending, it's going like, what it's going to, toward. So, yeah, and thank you all for getting another good process. I'll stop there and take any questions you might have.
See some questions, except thanks to you and your team and, and all of the, all of the town staff for working this through while you're doing everything else and they are doing everything else that they're responsible for.
Sure. Thanks.
Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Philip for sitting down with me and giving me a little budget one-on-one. Really helped me in the process and he gave me some commonsensical direction and I just appreciate that. Thank you.
For sure.
Any else here before we take comments? Did see a hand raised, so I don't know. I think Amy had a comment from earlier. She's still on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll allow Amy to talk.
And, and sorry, trustee LaCressee, you're entering a public comment now. So.
I have to do it again?
No, you can take, let's see, Jeff, does she need to close public hearing to go into public comment or just go into public comment?
No, so, so the way I recommend doing this is that when you start your conversation about this, staff report starts like Philip did. That, that was when the public hearing opened. So you've already opened the public hearing. You've heard from staff as part of the public hearing. Now you're going to have public comment as part of the public hearing. Then you're going to basically discuss it among yourselves as part of the public hearing. Motion and vote on it as part of the public hearing. When it's all done, you close the public hearing and you're totally done. So the public hearing stays open for the whole process.
Right. So then we'll start the public comment portion of the public hearing. Thank you for your help. All right, Amy X.
All right, um, Amy X-Tine one nineteen Meadow Lane. Um, so hello, board. I am here to maybe public comment, as you can imagine. I'm here talking about affordable housing. I was here last month. And I had maybe made the request or advocated for the town dedicating part of its sales tax. To an affordable housing fund. Um, I got some, I, I didn't, uh, make it to the public hearing after that. But I did hear, uh, Philip's comments that he doesn't agree with it. And I think I spoke with one other trustee. I was stoked. They got back to me and doesn't seem like it's really something the board wants to do. Um, but I would encourage you guys if, you know, if sales tax continues, right? Like you guys do nice conservative projections, probably three percent over last year. I'm assuming that's what you guys are doing, but, you know, I would just encourage some discipline, you know, if, if it comes in over three percent, if sales tax five, six, seven percent. Maybe try and squirrel that away. You can always put it right back into the general fund if you don't need it after a couple of years, but. I mean, that carbonate project is so key and maybe the grants, uh, there's so many grants out there now, which is awesome. Maybe you might not need it, but. Jeez, it would sure would be difficult if that carbonate project ended up being, you know, like half market rate. Um, but you know, that's just my thoughts, you know, affordable housing is really impacting. You know, this community so much. So, um, I think you can understand why, why I advocate for it. So, but I, what I am stoked is that the board really sees a value in a dedicated funding stream. And, you know, if it's not putting some sales tax aside, I get it. Obviously you guys have a ton of projects going on. Um, but I was hoping maybe to, to hear what the plan is for a dedicated revenue stream. Um, be awesome to get a little back and forth con- conversation about what is the plan? Um, you know, Salida voters approved a short-term rental tax, um, two of them. Um, which will bring in the projection, it sounds like is over eight hundred thousand dollars. So they have their dedicated revenue stream. And I assume the housing authority is going to get some of that lodging tax money. Um, so it seems like they kind of have their revenue stream. So, you know, I think BV has, is left, right? Um, this town has to really figure out how it's going to come up with some money. Um, you know, and I hope the property tax, those results came in, the fact that the community doesn't want that. I don't think it's that the community doesn't want to put money towards. Affordable housing. And I think most folks are in support of the town constructing its own housing, like the carbonate. Um, so I hope the group wouldn't, um, interpret it as the town not being supportive of workforce housing. I think it's just a property tax issue. Um, you know, it's just, it's kind of like the biggest ask. And, uh, from the folks I've spoken to, everyone's kind of scratching their head on like, why aren't we taxing short-term rentals? Um, that's just what I'm hearing in the community. So I don't know if that's a possibility for fall of twenty-three. Or if maybe this, this group has thought about like, what is our, going to be the dedicated revenue stream? Um, prior to this, there was a group in the community I was part of that we were looking to develop an issue committee and. An attempt to put a short-term rental tax. I mean, I, you know, I'd hopes for an exercise tax, but the, you know, the town admins, that makes sense. We're not home rule. We can't do it. Um, but you know, there is a group of us that, that want to see it happen. We're just, there's a lot of people suffering. Um. And it just seems like that's kind of the path. So, um, that's my comment. I'd, I'd love you guys to comment back. Um, I know that doesn't always happen, but is, I guess my question in summary is, is there a plan for a devic- dedicated revenue stream? Is fall twenty twenty-three a possibility for a tax question on a ballot? Or does it have to wait till fall of twenty-four? Um, and, or maybe does the town still believe it needs a dedicated revenue stream with all the grant funding? So. Um, thanks for letting me comment and, um. One final thing, the police station, I'm so stoked that this town's taking care of it. It's obviously an enormous. Expensive project, but it was pushed off for so long and, um. I think everyone should be, I'm just so stoked to see that happen. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Lots of questions in there. Well, I have, I don't quit nowhere to begin with all those questions, but does anybody have any? Thoughts or comments they'd like to share back?
I would like to share something if that's okay, because it relates to the short-term rentals. Um, we were invited to a Realtor, um, I guess sort of like class or seminar. It was more just to give, um, what we require for short-term rentals to the Realtor community. And one of the things that we kind of walked away understanding was there was a lot of. I guess there was a lot of discussion about the, um, ballot questions and how that worked out for Salida. Um, and I know that, you know, that's been sort of interesting points. Um, some of the things that they gave us feedback on was that. They were glad that we had our fees where we do with that, uh, short-term rental. Application, if you will. So, I don't know. And as far as dedicated revenue, I don't. I just wanted to give you that feedback because none of you were there. So I wanted you to know that that was kind of. The feedback we'd gotten from the Realtors. Now that was just a Realtor form.
That's helpful to know. Anybody else have thoughts? Let me look at the screen. See if Marcus' hand raised now. Don't forget about Mark. Um, I think there's, there's definitely some interesting things in there, maybe to consider for sure. Another ballot, uh, thing in the future. Trying something different. Agree that maybe there is more thought we could put into, into that stream. Um, but it is interesting with the grants and there is a lot of. Uh, seems to be interest in development right now, where a lot of people do want to provide, um, affordable housing. I think that's on us to make sure that happens, but, um, I think there were some comments in there and, um, I don't. Amy, if you're still listening, I don't know if we can answer all those questions tonight, but I think there were some good notes taken. Uh, about your thoughts, uh, ideas and concerns and that, you know, we can work on that maybe trustee interaction or. Uh, work sessions and such, but I very much appreciate the comment. Thank you.
I guess I, I would just say that I don't think this board has a much higher priority than trying to, uh, to pursue affordable housing. And I think, you know, it's been a little while since the election, but I think it's a matter of time before we sort of regroup and. I also, I think it's part of everything we do, is trying to look for that and look how to, look at how to fund it. And just how to advance it for pretty much every segment that needs it. So. I feel like, uh, just responding to Amy that, I mean, we're not going to forget about that and, um. We don't, I don't necessarily have a plan myself right now for a revenue stream, but, um. We're, we're not dropping the, we're not going to be dropping the ball. I don't think. We're going to be doing everything we can.
I don't know if this has exactly to do with the budget exactly, but since I was asked, since Jeff is on the line, I'm not. To my knowledge, I thought all any tax increase revenue ballot measures have to be on even your elect, your election, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I was going to jump in there. You can have a, as a such a great town, you can have a Tabor election, which is what you need, need to impose a new tax. Um, uh, in November of any year, and then you can do it, uh, in April of your regular election year.
Good to know.
I'm bored. Um, I'm not sure of the protocols here, but Amy has her hand up again.
And we're still in public comment. So, yep. Go ahead, Amy.
Hold on one, one second. There we go.
Hey, thanks. No, that was my question is if it, um, there's, so there's nothing active on, and then it sounds like it can be. In November of twenty-three, if like a group were to get together to do it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot. Thanks for responding, guys. Take care.
Um, and then if there's no other public comment, then I can close public comment. Okay, okay. So I'm seeing no other comments. We'll close public comment. I don't think I do. Gavel for me for that yet. Sorry, learning as we go here. Um, and then there is. Is there any more discussion, conversation, staff trustees? Can you touch on that one more time?
I think, uh, just, just in terms of understanding the process, you're, you're not approving anything during this portion. So it's just discussion, any clarifying questions or anything that you think the board wants to discuss, and then you'll close the public, public hearing.
Yeah, that's actually correct. Sorry, I was giving you our regular public hearing process. I kind of didn't. Realize you weren't approving anything till your next resolution. So you're, you're good to close when you're done. Thanks.
It's like, which one are we doing? Yeah, is there any other thoughts before we close and move on?
I do, I don't know if it's here later though, for you to talk about the property tax and the mills.
Uh, we can talk about that one when we get to that resolution.
At that, okay. Gotcha. Yep. This is all.
Well, if there's nothing else, then we'll close the public hearing. Um, obviously there's no action items on that. And from there, we will roll into, um, item C and talk about the resolutions. So. Up first here, we have, um, the resolution number seventy-four series. Two, resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Unavista, Colorado, adopting the Town of Unavista. Twenty twenty-three fee schedule. Uh, Phil, if there's, yep.
Sure. So page one oh nine, I put a, a memo together to, to summarize. All four resolutions that are before you for finishing off the budget. Um, the first part of that is the fee schedule. So that's, that is resolution number seventy-five. Uh, this is the twenty twenty-three, uh, fee schedule that you saw draft up at the previous meeting. So you'll see that noted in the resolution that the board looked at this November twenty-second and then, and then the meeting tonight. Um, so no changes have been made to that draft since the board last saw it. Um, the second resolution is resolution seventy-five. Which, uh, approves and adopts, uh, the twenty twenty-three budget that covers, uh, both the expenditures and the revenues. Uh, for that. And you'll see again, just kind of a reiteration of the, uh, projected fund balances and things like that. So. Same, same material, same information, but wanted to make it, uh, visible in a formal adoption here. Resolution number seventy-six is the appropriation of the funds so that we can spend those in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so you'll see that resolution shows the expenditures only. And then finally, resolution number seventy-seven is, uh, approving the certification of the mill levy. Uh, based on twenty twenty-two that we use in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so. Uh, it's, it's okay to step through it and approve those and discuss those as you would like, or we could do it all upfront. And we can have discussion and then the board could go through and, uh, consider those resolutions. I'm. I, I think we're pretty flexible with the process here. So if you want to step through one and then we can discuss it, that, we can do it that way.
So, let's go with it now.
Okay.
So, yep.
So, yeah, page one eleven is resolution number seventy-four and then the, the fee schedule follows.
Discussion, questions, any, anybody? Well, then I would enter in a motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution seventy-four.
Second, hot seconds. And then could we do a roll call vote? Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Henga.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee LaCresi.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Now we're on to D, uh, resolution number seventy-five. Um. Thoughts, questions, any discussion?
I have one thing to highlight on it if you'd mind.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sure. So, so page one twenty-eight, um, thank you Lisa for bringing it up. If you, um. Scroll down to the second page, page one twenty-nine, which, which are the list, the summary of revenues. For each fund and it shows you the inter-fun, inter-fun transfers and things. Um, down towards the bottom of that, you'll see fund balances all funds. That shows the revenue from fund balance. So that five point one million is the total across all the funds that we talked about earlier. Um, that we're spending in the fund balance for those carryover projects and fund balance projects that we're. Intentionally spending on balance towards. So, um, again, the. That, that evens out the expenditures and revenues, um, for, for, uh, for us. So anyway, I just wanted to highlight that so you all could see that fund balance spin in, in the actual resolution.
Any thoughts from trustees?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seventy-five.
Row, second, Swisher second. Roll call vote. Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee LaCresi.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Henga.
Yes.
Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Motion passes. So now we are on to item E, resolution number seven-six.
Page one thirty. So this looks very similar. It's, it's appropriating, uh, the funds for our expenditures. So. Uh, same numbers in terms of the expenditures on this resolution. Yeah, that's about it.
Questions, thoughts? This is already pretty much still here, but I have to ask anyway.
Yep.
I move that we approve resolution number seventy-six.
Vote yours.
It's yours. Come on in, Hilton Henga, and then a roll call vote, please. Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Henga.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee LaCresi.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
And Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Got passes. Right, then we've got item F.
Got one thousand, Philip.
Right? Uh, resolution number seventy-seven.
Yes, so in the packet, that's on page one forty-nine. Um, this morning I did send you an email about an amended version of this, both, both the resolution. And the exhibit, which is the certification form that we sent back to the county tomorrow, um, after adoption by the board. Uh, this is also on your desk, uh, that you can reference as well. So, um. Essentially each year. We get, uh, we get a statement from the county that shows us the net assessed valuation of all properties. Within the town of Unavista and how that's a subset of the county. Uh, we then take that and, and compare that to some numbers that DOLA provides to us. Um, and then we use a, a spreadsheet calculation that, um, takes a lot of these numbers. And calculates what, uh, mill levy rate we are allowed to go up to, to comply with Tabor. And then there's a second, uh, limitation of five and a half percent, uh, limitation, uh, revenue limit. Um, and so we use that and we, we go with the lower of the two and that's typically Tabor, uh, in our, in our case. The, uh, process is very interesting, I'll just say that. But on the exhibit, you will see the form, uh, breaks out. Uh, the net valuation is, uh, just a little over ninety-five million dollars in property values. Uh, and then you will see the, uh, general operating expenses line one. That is the, uh, top level mill levy rate, uh, that the, that the town could impose. Without going back to the voters to increase it. Um, but we are subject to, um. Tabor in that five and a half percent increase from year to year on what we actually collect. So that subtotal. Uh, right in the middle of that page, um, and actually that total down at the bottom is what the town actually collects. Uh, at, at Mills and in revenue, uh, for the, for twenty twenty-three. So it's a subset of that top. I will recognize that, uh, uh, DOLA was very helpful to me. We're making sure we're doing this right, uh, as was Jeff, uh, uh, and Catherine Sellers. So. Um, interesting process, but, uh, we have good numbers. And so I'll take any questions. Uh, I know there was a mention, if you had any.
I mean, you covered it a little bit. I was just a little, just while reading through it, not knowing some of the backstory, because I guess, not backstory, but. That's foundation of it. Because, uh, yeah, so I was reading like operating expenses and like, wait, is this having to do with our town operates? That's where I was just a little. Good terminology and stuff, so. terminology and stuff. So, yeah.
Terminology is a bit on that front, but, uh,
Because this is a process happens every year when you're going into the budgets, basically how are you comparing to last year, what changed?
Correct. So it's based on last year, and then you have to stay within those limits to comply with Tabor laws and so on. Uh, Jeff, is there anything that I might, might have missed that you want to add on?
No, I don't think so. I just, uh, had, I had a fun time last night running through all these numbers and looking at some, some historic, uh, town mill levies. It's, uh, i- it can get pretty tricky dealing with, um, how the Tabor and five point five cap supply based upon what the town's previous mill levy was. And so Philip asked some good questions and we spent a little time working through it, and I think, uh, I think he's pretty much covered it.
Is there anything? Is this amended or no? Is it just?
It's amended.
So it's as amended?
It's as amended. Uh, the.
Comes with this.
Yeah, and so the, the total revenue, um, is actually a little bit higher than what we loaded into our budget. I'm not, I'm not, I didn't go back and change our budget. It's not that much different. So we'll just see a little revenue is a little bit higher than what we budgeted for, uh, for this purpose, but, uh, yeah, it is, it is as amended based on what you have before you.
Entertaining. Nice.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution number seventy-seven as amended.
A second.
We should roll. And then a roll call vote when you're ready.
Trusty Cobb.
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Hinga.
Yes.
Trusty Jenkins.
Yes.
Trusty Lecretzi.
Yes.
Trusty Row.
Yes.
And Trusty Swisher.
Yes. It passes. Thank you so much. Thank, got you for one more. The whole night, um, all right, moving on to item G, uh, the twenty-twenty-two budget adjustment for purchasing uh, the Bray Allen, the water, right?
Yeah. So, um, first off, a little off this topic, but I do want to, since I don't have a report, I do want to, uh, let you all know that we did successfully close on our water loan, um, today. So, um, things are moving along. Sean, Sean gets to worry about everything. I get to be, it's okay, Sean, the money's coming. We're doing good. Keep going. So, no, I, I, again, a lot of kudos and thank you to the team, including Sean, uh, Jeff, uh, and legal team for getting us to that point with the water loan. So. So before you, uh, I, I put together a short memo. It's, it's, it's requesting the amendment to the twenty-twenty-two budget because there's a, a pretty good chance that we will close on the purchase of the Bray Allen Waterright in twenty-twenty-two. The twenty-twenty-three budget that you approved. And so this is just covering our basis if we can close, um, on that this month. So if we close on it, we spend twenty-twenty-two funds, obviously, we're not going to spend twenty-twenty-three funds uh, on it and vice versa. So, um, that's basically the request before you. It's, um, a revised purchase amount of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one payment. And that amends the budget, which, um, the board had already approved amending it to four hundred thousand, which was payment number one in twenty-twenty-two. So, um, if the board approves this amendment, we will bring forward, well, we will regardless if you approve this or not, the final adjustment to the twenty-twenty-two budget will be a public hearing in January to true up, um, all the changes that we've made, uh, in the second half of this year. So, um, in terms of fund balance projections, it's the same as what you, what we've all been just looking at. It's just spending the money in twenty-two versus twenty-three.
That's awful. Then, I mean, I know personally, I think it'd be nice to move this along.
Yeah.
For sure, and for the other party, but, um, any thoughts, concerns, discussion?
Sort of paying this in one shot instead of in three parts, we are. Okay. Um, and just to that point, the original purchase price was one point two million, and we had split that into three payments over three years. Um, because of the reduced payment, there was the request to pay it in one shot. Um, that worked well with our water fund. There's no concern with that. So that's the way it's tracked.
I'll make a motion to approve a twenty-twenty-two budget minute, budget amendment to the water fund, increasing account O two dash seven-one-five dash four-eight-two-three water rights from four hundred thousand dollars to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that all you need?
That's it.
Second.
Cool.
Right, Row Cobb, and then Paul, when you're ready, would you do a roll call?
Trusty Swisher.
Yes.
Trusty Row.
Yes.
Trusty Lecretzi.
Yes.
Trusty Jenkins.
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Hinga.
Yes.
Trusty Cobb.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thanks so much for going through all of that and putting it all together. Great job.
Unless this is the first time we've proved everything, right? About proved everything, but everything that was in the budget was gone through.
Yeah.
Oh.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
That's pretty.
Good start.
Fully funded budget.
It's always a good touch. Yeah. It's a good thing. It's a good thing. All right, so now we have trustee interaction, and I guess let's, let's do this, the, hey, we'll, we'll start with, uh, Mark there online, and then we'll go to Sean next. So.
Yeah, I don't really have a whole lot. Just wanted to say hi to everybody, and if it makes you feel any better, it's pretty much ranked every day since we've been here.
Oh, no.
It's been reinforced.
But, you know, gives more time, gives more time for drinking beer and eating a lot of food.
There you go.
There you go.
So, yeah, miss all you guys and, uh, look forward to getting back. And, uh, thanks for tonight. And, uh, yeah, we'll see you next year.
All right, have fun, Mark.
Enjoying it not being fourteen degrees outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Sean.
Yeah, um, just, you know, just to kind of reiterate what I actually did my staff report, uh, really, uh, really cool opportunity, uh, with, with all the advisory boards that I work with, uh, that we work with, but fantastic, um, participation with Water Advisory Board and wanted to, you know, get, um, get this, uh, conservation planning, you know, off the ground. Uh, whether, whether or not we, we, you know, we're awarded a grant, they're, they're still doing really big work in that, with that, with that team. It's just, uh, really good things. And I think we're, you know, we see those opportunities, you know, with our unaccounted dropping down, you know, twelve to forty percent, you know, this last, you know, um, maybe sixteen months now. You know, opportunities for us to find other ways that we could, you know, make the use of our limited water. Develop more SFEs within existing current water rights. Cool opportunities. Yeah, I just, yeah, I think, uh, the, the only other thing I'd say is, uh, yeah, what, what, um, what a pleasure it is to, to work with everybody with the town staff, and you guys do a fantastic job as well. Thank you for your support and all you do. Happy holidays.
Salute. Thank you too. All right, Philip?
You're gonna be choked up, Sean.
Oh, yeah, I know. Um, uh, what was I gonna mention? Oh, the grants, uh, the request for partnership on grants. I just wanted to say that, um, you know, my department takes on the, uh, primary responsibility for grant, uh, management administration. And, uh, it, it's not a li- a little lift. There's quite a bit involved, and we do have a long list of grants and loans on our books right now. That said, I do feel like there's opportunities that are available right now. And so I don't, I do not want to get in the way of that. I think we do have some options as staff. Becky, who's on our team now in the finance department, um, is eager and willing to spend some more hours. She's part-time right now. So there's opportunity there a little bit with her workload. Uh, but I will be leaning on Lisa and, and, and Joseph if we do move forward with specifically the two that were mentioned tonight. Joe's is pretty, uh, first in, in helping with grant management. He's helped me with the police station with the DOLA grant a good bit. So I just think it's a good awareness of, of the workload that we add with that, but uh, I think staff is definitely figure out how to get around that. Uh, if the board wants to pursue some of those opportunities, because I haven't seen opportunities like that in the last ten, twelve years. So.
I have a process question on that specifically when we're looking at like Crossman or one of these developments that will be coming in front of us in terms of approving, you're not approving, um, like the development and also allocation of water and all that. Is there like a cart for the horse to have a thing on looking for the grant? Like, do we want to go into the process of trying to get a grant when it's not even approved yet, or? But that was my main question, but I figured probably wasn't the best, or that's actually like, how, what does that look like and how do we go about that?
That's a great question. I, I don't think, you know, Jeff, Lisa could definitely jump in as well. I don't think there's any, like, legal, uh, or, or, or requirement. We'll see. I actually have not seen the grant application for these, so I, I shouldn't speak too soon. They might require that a project be at a certain stage of approval or guarantee before they allocate money, or it might just be, hey, we will, um, commit if you achieve approval. I, I really don't know, um, how they handle it on their side, on the grant, uh, side, but um, that's a fantastic question in terms of moving forward, getting a commitment for a grant, yet the entitlements and other things haven't been heard and approved by the board yet. I don't know. That might be a little out of sequence. Maybe Jeff has some thoughts on that.
Smiling.
I'm smiling because it's a great question. It's still said, and I don't know the answer. I think the answer is we need to talk to the granting agency and figure out what the requirements are for the grant. I mean, I think ultimately, you're gonna have to get that information from them, because I, I have, I don't know how they're gonna set that up.
Say even beyond just the legal side of it, there's the appearance side of preference, right? I mean, some of these developments that we're looking at, their whole face could wipe out all existing, you know, SFEs kind of, right? But like, if it, that is, we're, we're going, working on a grant proposal with one development, would other developers think we're taking preference, preferential treatment or something like that? So even if it's not a legal thing, there's a perception.
And this is the Crossman, is that the same grant as what the Carbonite would be? Is that the same?
So the one that's for Paul is a DOLA grant, um, and the other one is related to the opioid.
Yeah, but carbon and street.
That's, yes, that's the same one. So we didn't ask to be applying for Carbonite Street project for our own.
Right.
That we're, you know, keeping it fading west.
Right.
And our project, and then also, you know, basically helping this developer out by taking a lead on, on one. And I know, I know that Paul said that he will, they're writing it and they're going to lead on it. The only thing is, is there are just certain requirement, reporting requirements that come after you get the grant that the city would be responsible for coordinating with him. And so there is a little bit more staff time than is visible, I think, here. And I guess I would caution. My, my, my caution is that if we do it for one developer, then the others will see that as well, and they'll want us to support theirs. And I don't know where you draw that line. I guess I just have to decide, but it is a perception. But it is, he is putting a lot into affordability, so that's kind of way to major that.
A few comments to that. Um, we couldn't put what we're going for in jeopardy for Carbonite Street to help another developer. And then when we go to, if I'm going to vote approve on something, I want to know what they're giving in, um, the AMI range. I, I want guarantees. If your grant comes later and you don't get your grant, if I'm approving something, I still want the affordability that you mentioned. And that's so how they do that in a sequence. And if he doesn't get that grant, he might not be able to, uh, deliver what he said he was going to. But if we're voting on affordability and he's saying that they can do this and their grant hasn't been approved yet, we're voting, we're voting on, we're getting a deal. It's not well, in case you don't get that, don't worry about it, because we're trying to make affordable housing for people and we need, we need good facts to vote on.
Good point. Thoughts? On this? Just, um, pie in the sky. I mean, some communities have grant administrators that really, you know, kind of coordinate all the grants from all the different departments, not that they don't need all the help from the departments, but you know, we just approved a budget and that, that position's not in there, but that, is that remotely possible for town ever? I mean, and, and could you have a grant administrator that also is a grant writer?
Yeah.
Fantasy island.
It definitely, I'll just speak from the capability standpoint. It is, is certainly an option to have someone who's a grant writer also following up with all of the backend requirements, absolutely one hundred percent. I, it's, it's hard to fit another headcount into the budget. That's, that's just always the
Reality.
To, to continue with maintenance and capital projects that the town really supports and wants. Yeah, so it's always that like priority competition thing. But, I mean, it's been a topic we've, we've touched on, and I think there it, it might pop. There might be opportunities to bring someone on, uh, for time.
Yeah.
Let's.
Well, and one of the other things, just as FYI, and I forget the name of the organization that she's with.
The COG.
The COG, oh, yeah, yeah. Has, uh, an opening for a grant specialist, um, and they came to talk to the Economic Development Council, and, um, I talked to her a little bit afterwards. They're doing that in the interest of helping and assisting municipalities, everything from just doing the initial research for grants, but also for grant writing, depending on the size and qualifications, they probably have some way of measure, weighing and measuring that for each community, but that's just a year grant type of thing at the state level that, and it's only for ARBA and I forget the other type
Infrastructure.
Grants.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah. So this is, this is a good thing. That's something that we could tap into and ask our team leads to give us an idea of any grants that they might be able to chase, help us chase, um, so that we can kind of offset some things on this up and coming position. So maybe we'll have a little more time if we don't have to focus on those two types of grants, but I don't, I mean, it's, it's not been filled yet, and a lot of municipalities are involved in that, and you've got one person doing it for all municipalities. Then, you know.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
There's just a lot of nitty gritty to it. Like, you have to have access to our bank accounts so you can get checks for proof of pain.
It relies on.
It does. But the, the capacity to help at least research grants, find opportunities, prioritize grants, I think there's some opportunity there for sure.
One more thing that I think I want to point out is that I thought Paul had said that he had talked to them at the DOLA administration about whether or not this would be a conflict of Carbonite. Did he not say that it, they said it would not, but Joseph had talked to them as well and asked them if they could put in writing to bring to you all, and they were hesitant to do that. So I don't know. I mean, that's just to say that I don't really know. It's not a legal conflict of interest, but certainly I don't know where they stand, the DOLA grant administration.
We know, I don't think it'd be the best idea for us to jeopardize our Carbonite, especially because we have other things invested in that and as our and as our from our town, you know, it's, we're putting that on. Um, and the opioid, I mean, Boys and Girls Club, to me, that makes, I mean, the work, the extra work is not great. Um, I think he was like, I'll do all the stuff, but again, there's still work you're gonna have, you know, staff would have to do. But considering that's a different bucket and that could be up to, I think he said it was like a million dollars or so, like, which would be great. And so I think if there was the ability to do that, I think that would be a great thing. And then I'm a little weary of the Crossman, uh just because I do think of things you just say, for instance, the, what's the appearance? And if it could potentially jeopardize our chance of getting that same bucket, the worst thing could happen would be both put in and we get neither, right? So, which would be horrible. So let's uh, so there's that possibility too, I guess. But um, and I also that you could do it monthly, I think, um, tenth or something. So he wanted to have it done by, I think, Jan tenth or the end of January.
It's the January tenth and that's just to point out, that's the next time.
Yeah, that's yeah. So I, so I don't think, I, I think that's something we'll probably have to wait because of the situation, the timeline. So I think we already have our things in order with what we need to do as town um in terms of the Carbonite Street and going for that grant, so.
Yeah, just a, well, it spells I could hear, but I think first up to Phil's point, I don't want us to miss out on funds, because it's just, there was a lot of money pumped into the system the past couple of years and we should try to do whatever we can to try to get funds, because, you know, we've said this a thousand times here, we're not some accounting, we don't have resort money. So if there is money out there, then we should be going after it, as long as it doesn't stress out staff and everything else. But, you know, and also say, like, if you're talking about competing applications for grants, Carbonite is town land, that is for workforce housing for town. Like, they're not even close if are going by Dola standards of where you're gonna award it to. I don't think they're even in the same, that that's my personal take just looking at it. Like, if you're looking at a governance fee of, how are you gonna award these? Like, one is, this is a town project, town land for workforce housing, going through the Housing Authority, all these other things, one's a private developer that's trying to work with you. But I don't know, I just, I think they're on two totally different levels for consideration. But that's, again, just my view on that. I don't want to totally say no to something if.
Sure. Is that, is that something that we could scope out with Dola or someone else ahead of time and just say, what are, I mean, not what are the chances? I think they can't tip their hand or they wouldn't have reviewed it. But I'm wondering if just somebody might have not, might be able to tell us, you should go for one or the other? Or Peter said they're just in different categories, it wouldn't matter.
Joseph had apparently done that.
He did, I, I mean, I, my advice to Joseph was, I knew this conversation was gonna have to happen. And I said, if you can get anything from them to inform the board whether competition is good, bad, what, does it hurt the odds? And and they, yeah, they didn't want to give him any indication. I mean, there's, for what, for whatever reasons. But I think more time can be spent vetting it with Dola or, you know, Department of Health, whoever's in charge of these grants to further understand. I mean, I get the urgency and trying to. But it is a monthly, as mentioned, it is a monthly si- uh cycle. I, and maybe that project can continue to move along a little bit forward in its progress or process while Carbonite Street is pursued first.
Okay.
This is mine, just mine.
Okay.
But I I think more time needs to be spent looking into it.
Okay. I don't know, I know we're kind of hovering on this one topic, but Devin and and Mark, I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that? I don't want to beat out if you, just before we kind of continue, you don't have to, but since it, just to get everybody's thoughts on that.
No, I'm good, I'm good, Gina, thank you.
Who is Mark on?
Oh, he, he said he's all good, so if there's any.
I'm all good.
All right, all right, Paula, come deeper.
I'm good, happy holidays. Sandy, you're looking forward to twenty twenty three.
Yeah, there we go. All right. Then trustee interaction.
Yeah, um, yeah, I like my coin, I'm expecting a slammer from every department next year to complete my collection. That's all.
Um, I think, I think I'm good. Thank you. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I just wanted, this came up during our uh beautification Christmas little gathering. But um uh there's been an uptick in vandalizing or ban uh kind of destruction of some of the beautification projects. And I know that, you know, uh what works, that to do with that, like vandalizing as well or um like the bathrooms and some other stuff that's going on. And the main point was that it hasn't happened in the past. So the different um decorations they've had for the seasons and everything else, they haven't really had an issue. But this season we've had like nine of scare, the scarecrows were stolen during the um during the fall. And then also people are ripping out the solar panels for the Christmas lights. And so they're just ripping out the panels, unleaving the lights. And then uh, and then also some of the small trees have been removed. And then the the snowman at the splash park was uh decapitated and vandalized too. So um, you know, I think the the thing that I thought was interesting highlighting, because, you know, reading these out loud kind of sounds silly to square next to them, but it's not, so I think that the fact they haven't had that issue at all.
Yeah.
Before and that they now have added two seasons, you on a row. Um, and you know, the solar lights was, are cheap and on a tight budget and everything else. But that, uh I just said I'd raise it just for discussion and like, so I think vandalism, it's kind of been an uptick in other areas. Um, but for us to keep an eye on if there's anything, anybody has any thoughts on on that? Because again, that means several of the trees and lights are other stolen or we won't have lighting in those um. Um, yeah.
Do you know if they've shared them with the police chief?
They, that was just that they didn't really know if they want to raise this to that kind of.
I think, yeah. Oh, they, oh, they know.
Yeah.
Is it, is it worth, like a letter to the editor or something on social media?
That was a big debate at the, at the brunch, because it's kind of a, do we really want to bring people down during the season? And so all these other things, I'm like, I'll just mention it during the meeting, see if people have thoughts, we could discuss it, but.
Wish people understood how much money and.
Yeah.
You know, people put their hearts.
Yes.
Yeah, like a lot of goodwill. Some of the trees were decorated by, you know, individuals and families. So it's just kind of the greatest Christmas.
Because that's why I'm wondering if a letter to the editor wouldn't be a good idea to just explain all that. So that's your neighbors and friends and all that, kids and families that you're.
I have, I have to say, I mean, you mentioned it sounds silly saying it out loud. Uh, the tree that my family uh decorated in front of Town Hall was the one that was, one of the ones that was ripped out and taken. I took that personally this week, you know, and I had my, my family's name on it. And then to see, we actually have video of them. Um, can't make up the license plate, but yeah, just watching them just nonchalantly just rip it and go. Coming from, you know, the bar. Um, yeah, yeah, as a community, you kind of take that personally, I don't like that.
Yeah, I didn't mean.
I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to minimize the, yeah, the vandalizing of it, but.
Yeah.
So you did see video of who did it? And it was just drunk people at the bar?
Yep. People.
Well, the interesting thing, Philip, because when I came Monday morning, you know, the, the trees, they're in a basket with rocks and they go in the plants. And when we put the trees in, we had to zip tie the tree to the basket. So they carried that basket with the rocks in the tree from the planter to the railroad tracks. And somebody would have had to cut that, those zip ties.
It broke.
It broke?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, it is, vandalism is not a good sign.
No.
So it's good to bring it up publicly, um whether it's a letter to the editor or not. We've, we've faced it before and we bring it up when it happens and we put emphasis on it and it seems to taper down. But, yeah.
Trying to figure out something, I don't think that's a bad idea for a letter or you have somebody here that has a computer that writes for a newspaper.
I have all the number counts and things have been vandalized in the past few weeks.
But I I don't think that's a bad thing. And I don't think that will necessarily bring people down, but it also might alert people to keep their eyes peeled too. You know, without doing something to the general community, kind of, your eyes peeled. Is there anything else?
Yeah, no, that was the main thing I want to talk about.
Cindy? Well, that dropped me down. Yeah, it's like, that's not all time being this step. Don't touch it if it doesn't belong to you. But anyway, I just want to do what you guys have, happy holiday season. And I do say Merry Christmas and hope you all get to spend some time with your families. I don't know if Devin should get to go back again.
I'd like to be the home at Christmas, because the weather's bad. Rather be here with, with snows good.
Lisa? I would like to thank Philip for doing such a great job with their budget and really taking your hands on it this year, even though I just started it. Going forward to, you know, you did an excellent job, obviously. And Sean did an excellent job at presenting at the Dola um presentation last week as well. And I think our mayor wrote them very well tonight. And happy holidays.
Um, and hey, Jeff, how about you? I think we always forget to ask you, I want to ask you.
No, no, I, I, it's been a good year, I appreciate working for Univista, it's a great community and a great town. It's really nice to see elected officials who work well together and it's competent staff who's working hard. And you're a great client, you've been my client since two thousand and ten. And uh it's, your town has changed a lot and a lot for the good and there's a lot of pressures on you. But I just appreciate the opportunity to represent you all, so hope you all have a great holiday.
And all I, all I have, everybody's helped tonight on this little, you know, trying to figure things out a little bit on the fly, trying to do some homework, but thank you for your help and your patience. Um, and also, I, I, well, going along with the patients, especially with the the first business item. Um, I know that was a little bit of a different thing since it was canceled, but I appreciate the time that we have to do a little bit of discussion. As the water stuff is obviously so important to all the things that are happening here. So I appreciate the time we took with that. And um, and I do look forward to having more conversations, you know, after Joseph gets back in section, moving things along at the right speed, of course. But other than that, yeah, appreciate everybody here.
I just have one quick question, if you're done, Gina. Do I need direction as far as the Boys and Girls Club grant and um support on that?
No, I don't. Did, uh, Jeff, do you think that the board needs to, needs a little formal approval for the grants with Boys and Girls Club or?
Yeah, you know, I think that ultimately to get clear direction, I think you guys should actually make a decision um one way or another and you could just motion and vote on it, so it's on the record and it's clear what your direction is.
I guess, doing it on the one, do we want?
If you want to make a decision tonight, I should say.
Well, I know for the, for the Boys and Girls Club, he had said that that needs to be in by the end of this month, which is a, was, I believe that was correct, right? It was the end of December, for the Boys and Girls.
It was at least January, like it was, I think it was soon. So I think it it would be good to have direction from the board if you're comfortable with town serving as that applicant and working with Boys and Girls Club on that.
And Philip, I think I understood you to say that even though it's added work, you could probably make that work, given the opportunity.
Sure, Joseph is on air, we'll have him.
Yeah.
He owes me. Uh, yes, that's correct, in ser- in all seriousness, yeah, we, we can make that.
And I would support, support their request myself. Any thoughts otherwise to make the motion?
I think it is much different than a private developer. Um, the Boys and Girls Club does so much for the youth in our community. And I think it's important that we support them in getting their building built. And if I'm not mistaken, they're even going to be allowing to, the town to use that building for some things. So we should definitely be supporting, supporting them. But I would do it on the youth alone, because the Boys and Girls Club is very important for the community.
And that vandalism, that's for sure. I would entertain a motion.
So with what I said, I'll say that we should make a motion to support the Boys and Girls Club in their grant application.
Swisher call? And then I guess, uh, let's do a, I guess, a roll call, because it, or.
We're not appealing, we're not committing any funds yet. This is just simply direction to work with them on the application, so you could just do regular.
Okay, well, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thanks for reminding us, Paula.
Yeah, thank you. I, for the other one, though I know that's also soon, I think that does demand a little bit more uh understanding of all the pieces. So I would.
Okay.
Prefer we wait on that.
I don't want to.
Yeah, I I think that's too soon without enough information from.
How about I do this? How about I um work to get you something, some status, um, you know? I know the next time we meet is the tenth of January and I think he said the January is needed to have an answer. So would it be appropriate to just delay to email Jeff that to the trustees on the status? Will we find out with the Dola reps, um, talking with them a little bit more about that grant and whether or not it's a conflict? Or how would you recommend? I mean, will we need to come back for a special meeting?
You'd have to come back, you basically couldn't get any sort of official decision or vote by the board without having a public meeting, sorry.
Yeah, that's.
I refuse to be pushed into a quick decision because of his timeline. If he was applying for this, he should have thought about it in that, in advance and given us time to consider it with, taking the time to consider it, all the options, how it's gonna affect the town people, um, how it could affect other grants that we want to apply for. So I don't think just because he has a deadline for that day, he could to put it back to February. If he wants us to take the time to make a proper decision.
Should, should someone communicate that to him that? Or are we?
I can simply send you an email, like, you know, that we're to do a little more research as to the effects that that would have for us to apply for Carbonite Street and also, you know, support his application. And that the next meeting that we have is on the tenth, and so we'll have to make.
And and as to the point that was brought up earlier as well, um, and I think Philip, Peter, we're talking about this, we don't even know the parameters of, we haven't awarded anything to his development yet to even potentially be up to, we don't know what that entails. Maybe that need, we, you know, so that alone, I prefer not to, I agree with Cindy, put anything to a vote right now, because there's too many unknowns. And the fact he did say it is a monthly thing, if it doesn't come in at the exact time he needs, that just might be how it is, if we decide to do it in February, then so be it. But I think at this point, that's just too soon without having the correct information and not knowing all the information needed for the grant. So, um.
That's it. An email and let him know that, you know, we'll do a little research on our end and he can provide us. Maybe he can provide us, I mean, he did say that he had talked with them, there was no conflict, but maybe they'll put it right in for him, they wouldn't do it for Joseph. So, um, you know, we can bring something back as far as a recommendation on the tenth.
I was, trustees feel with them?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Paula.
Yep.
All right, I think that's about it. Happy holidays to everybody, thanks for everybody's service and help and support and doing a kickback job for this community. And really, I have one thing left on this agenda, wants to make the motion. I'm gonna kick butt job for this community and really, I want one thing left on this agenda, wants to make the motion.
I'll make a mark for the journal.
All right, all in favor? All right, thanks for coming.